Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Sherrell?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Lown?
Here.
Councilor Herring?
Here.
Councilor Penalacca?
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Here.
Councilor Marconi?
Here.
Councilor St. Laurent?
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer in memory of Charlie Deder Sr., who was just a wonderful man. And then Councilor Lown will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, ending with God bless America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to the acceptance of the minutes of March 18th, 2002, and April 1st, 2002.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. We're down to the public comment session, which is three minutes. And we have three speakers. The first one is Steve Miller, the watershed study.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to take a few minutes to come tonight and thank you for your support for our grant that we're beginning, the watershed study for the North Mill Pond and the Hodgson's Brook. I haven't had a chance to do so publicly. I've missed a couple opportunities. I was here when the council did the thank you for Annette, and just didn't get a chance to get up here. But I did want to take a few minutes to thank you for your support. The advocates are very excited about getting started. We've done a ton of preparation work, working with Natalie Landria at DES. There's a lot of preparation that we've done, both organizational-wide and planning and those types of things. So we're anxious to get underway and really do appreciate your support. We currently have an informational meeting scheduled for May 30th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and that's going to be at the Red Hook. Not for any drinking reasons, but because they have a great big room. And it's actually at the headwaters of the Hodgson's Brook, so we thought that would be kind of fun. And they had the room available. And we're hoping to attract a lot of people from the businesses and P's, get them invited, let them know what we're going to be up to, and we're going to be recruiting people for our LAC, which is the Local Advisory Committee. The LAC will be made up of stakeholders in the watershed, who will be helping to direct the work and will be intimately involved in all that we're going to be doing. So it's truly a study and a project that will get everyone involved who has a stake in the watershed. So that's going on on May 30th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And we certainly invite city council members, if they're interested to come, we'd love to have you there. Letters will be going out next week with information about that. The other thing is, just to update you real quick, that the advocates are busy with all of our other work. We're scheduling our seventh annual North Mill Pond cleanup, which is scheduled for June 1st, 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock. And we'll be doing our usual cleanup of the shores of the North Mill Pond on that day. So just wanted to let you know about that. But more than anything, just really came to thank you all for your support and looking forward to working with all the city on the project. So thank you.
Thank you for your good work, Steve. The next speaker is Wayne Ecker, and he's going to speak on city business.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you're all in good health tonight. A while ago, quite a while ago, a couple of people up there asked me what I thought of the city manager. I gave you part of my answer last time. This time, I'll give you the rest of the answer. He's only as good as the people that work WITH him. I said WITH, not FOR, WITH. And you've got a $30,000 giveaway that we're going to give away for a walkabout. I've got a tape there. That's Hogan's, Paul Hogan, a crocodile Dundee, and he does a walkabout like a comedy. And you're going to spend 30 grand of our money for a walkabout to find out where our boundary is, which we already know there is. You can't take any more kittery. The water is there. You're going to tick off all the towns around us if you're going to do that. And I think it's kind of nutso. And the other thing, the snow removal budget. You people approve a budget of, let's say, $300,000. You spend $200,000. You've got $100,000 that you've never used this year. Yet your public works director says he's going to go to work and spend it on this, that, or the other, because you need to spend it. No? Am I wrong, John? Okay, I'll keep going. Anyway, you approve a budget of $300,000 for snow removal, for snow removal, salt, and sanding. And to me, as a businessperson, I do snow removal in the wintertime. And if I had a budget of $300,000, and I didn't spend the $300,000, and I have $100,000 left, I'd put that sucker in a surplus for the next following year, so that I didn't have to go begging for another $100,000. I don't exactly know what you people think about that, but that's the way I think about that. Why do you have to go to work and spend it if you've got it and you don't have to spend it? I'm going to tell you a little story about my wife. Works for Lu...well, first it was AT&amp;T, then Lu...now it's Aguirre. And I told this little story once before. She's not a boss, she's a worker. She's a scientist, works in a laboratory. And her boss comes along, he doesn't know diddly squat about what she does. He says, "You've got to buy this microscope for a million and a quarter." You know, listen, stocks is right down the toilet right now. Anyway, she didn't want to buy this microscope. She didn't want to buy it. He forced her to buy it. Sat in the corner for a year and a quarter, a year and a half. She didn't use it. She had a way of doing it so that she didn't have to use it. He's fired. They got rid of him. So I don't understand why you have to go to work and spend that $100,000 just because you haven't used it. Why don't you push it into the following year? Or is there something that I don't know about what you do with this budget? I don't understand it. I'm a businessperson. If I had extra money, I'd put it over here and save it for the next year, so I wouldn't have to come crying to borrow more, get more money from new people. Or am I wrong? I must be wrong, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ecker. The next speaker and final speaker is Peter Braziano, and he's going to speak about the preambulation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. Before I get into...I want to congratulate the people that went to Concord on Friday. There were at least 10 people from Portsmouth that went up Friday and testified before the Senate Finance Committee. Did the Herald get that right, the Finance Committee? And no other town or city had that many people testifying on the sunset bill dealing with the statewide property tax. I want to congratulate you all. I just, you know, the way they do things up there, though, just does not interest me, the way they run their committees, but no matter. But thank you very much for going up and speaking on behalf of the city. Preambulation. Gee, the Herald almost stole all my thunder, and he's going to talk about it. I don't really know a lot about it. Read in the paper this morning, said, "I don't know anything about it." But I have a few things to say about it. One being that it's a state statute that requires that we do it every seven years. Well, by golly, if it's a state statute, then Concord needs to send this down $15,000 to $30,000, and by golly, we'll do it every seven years. But if they don't, I don't see the need to do it unless and until something comes up that says, you know, "We need to do this preambulation. We need to know where our border is at Rye." Because I, like Harold, do not see taking $30,000 out of the budget, I don't care whether it's out of the general budget, the operating budget, the capital budget, I just don't see taking it out and spending $30,000 on what amounts to a walk-around of the city border. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Now we're down to the public hearing, and I will read it, read it. Notice hereby given, ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Period 202, for the rezoning of land on Deer Street. I will pass this to John.
Your Honor, what I'd like to do is have Dave Holden, the Planning Director, come forward and give a brief synopsis of the proposed zone change and some of the history that's associated with it. Dave?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, stand before you, presenting the Planning Board report to you, which considered a zone change in this area. What is before you is a change to the zoning map. It is an ordinance change because the zoning map is itself an ordinance. The area involved historically has been a part of the former B&amp;M Railroad or Guilford Transportation. The area has been zoned industrial, has been zoned central business, and most recently, the predominant area has been zoned office research. The request before you would be to return it to a central business designation. The Planning Board, on review of this request, found that this is an urban area, that it does fit the criteria for being so treated, and hence is favorably recommending the map change to allow this area, once again, to be in the central business district. As part of that, the Planning Board also noted that the office research designation really does not work except for changes of use. The lot area requirements are significant, the yard areas are significant, and in fact, most lots in that area would not conform to those requirements, whereas a central business brings in the type of uses you'd be looking for, and it's a little bit more flexible in terms of yards, open space, and what have you. Hence, the Planning Board's recommendation to you. If you have any additional questions, I'll try to answer.
Do you have any questions? This is a public hearing, so we'll make it brief. Go right ahead.
Does anyone know why it was changed to office research? Would it have to do with the fish rendering plant?
At one time, yes. The Planning Board, at one time, considered this area to remain industrial. Due to concerns with the fish plant, this area was rezoned office research.
Thank you, Brett. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go right into the public hearing. We'll open it up, far, against, or simply to. Do I have any first-time speakers? Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Bob Thorson. I'm here representing GL Rogers and Deer Street Associates, who are the owners of the property that is to be rezoned. We are here requesting that the property in question be rezoned back from the office research to central business, which is what it was, at least until 1982, all the way up until 1995. And I think it's important to take just a minute or two to tell you what happened over time with regard to that property. From the mid-1960s through at least 1995, the land was zoned either all central business or partially central business and partially industrial. The western tip of that property was zoned industrial in the 1960s, which is really a remnant of what occurred when the, when that whole area was supportive of the railroad line. And I think the change in what occurred at White's Farm and Garden Center sort of illustrates how the land uses changed over a period of time. Originally, White's Farm and Garden Center was part of the industrial land or the railroad land, and the goods came, they were bulk feed and supplies that came by railroad. And by the 1960s, the railroad had really disappeared as a function of supplying bulk feeds. And so what happened to White's Farm and Garden Center is that they changed it from a wholesale operation to a retail garden center. And like most uses in that area, was no longer dependent on the railroad for its activity. And consequently, the land, sometime during the 60s, I couldn't really pin it down in the records, was rezoned to Central Business District, to reflect the change of land use activity that was occurring in that area. And in my report, that's shown in Exhibit B. In the 1970s, this area was part of the Urban Renewal Project, and Lot 18, which is on the far eastern end of their property, was actually part of the Urban Renewal Area, and it was taken by the Portsmouth Housing Authority and then changed and then sold off for private development land. It was sold to Goodwin Oil Company for office and retail use. And I know that for a fact that it was zoned residential, zoned central business then. When I was the Planning Director, I had to work with him in terms of his development proposal. In 1982, there was a citywide rezoning that occurred, and that's the first time that they started using property boundaries for district lines. And that whole area was then rezoned Central Business District along the back of that property line. And everything to the south of that was Central Business. And then in 1995, for reasons that are a little bit unclear, it was rezoned to Office Research. I think that the reason for it was a spillover of what happened down the railroad tracks. And you'll recall, I believe, that there was a fish processing plant down there, and there was problems with odor and noise with the adjacent neighborhood. And I believe the city tried to get involved and tried to broker a resolution of that and was unable to do it. And as a result, what they did is they rezoned that land from industrial to office research, so that there couldn't be any more expansion of that fish processing plant, nor could any other fish processing plant or some other noxious use occur in that area. And this whole strip, all the way down to here, was at least partially industrial. And I think they just, through some drafting error or something, they included this property in it, even though it really didn't belong in it. It was always had an office and a retail and service commercial character to it. In my judgment, as a planner, the Office Research District is not appropriate in that area for the following reasons. The Office Research District is a, requires three acre zoning. It requires very substantial setbacks. It requires 100-foot front setback, 75 feet on the sides, and 50 feet in the rear. So it wouldn't even be possible to, that whole depth of that property is less than 100 feet. So you can see, there would be a huge problem. The second problem is that it's, you know, very wasteful of a scarce resource of land in an area that's already been developed commercially. This also, this district allows very few uses. Basically, it allows only office and sort of laboratory research-type activities. It doesn't permit any institutional uses, like banks, which there's a mortgage company there now. It doesn't permit retail uses. It does not permit a coffee shop, for example, which is there, a beverage barn, the pizza shop, the eyeglass, or the Jiffy Coffee Center. None of those uses are permitted. So it means that, over time, these would have to actually disappear. And I think that's the wrong thing to have happen in that area of the downtown. It seems to me clearly that this whole area has a retail and a service commercial character to it, and it was previously developed that way. And I think that it's inappropriate to then rezone it to Office Research. For those reasons and for the additional reasons that I've stated in my report to you and to the Planning Board, we are respectfully requesting that this land be rezoned to Central Business District, and return it basically to what it was previously. And during the Planning Board deliberations...
My pleasure. This property, right here, is added at the request of the landowner. I'm sorry. People at home like to hear you.
Okay. At the request of the Planning Board, excuse me, at the request of the landowner, this property was added to the Central Business District area. That also, by the way, was zoned Central Business District historically. And for some reason, that also got put into the Office Research. That use is not permitted in Office Research, but it is permitted arguably in the Central Business District. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you have any questions? Anyone? Thank you very much, Bob. Very enlightening. First time around, do I have any other speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Please come forward. Third and final time, do I have any other speakers before I close the public hearing? Please come forward. Come right up to the podium, Duncan. State your name and your address.
Sure. I'm Duncan McCollum at 536 State Street. I'm up here not to speak for or against this project, so much as to ask a question or two. The main question is, what is the practical effect of this proposed change? Why is, why are the proponents of this change requesting it? What's the purpose of changing the ordinance?
Dave, would you like to answer that? Come down to the podium and answer that volume, would you please?
In response to that question, the particular benefit that arises from this is to allow that area to take advantage of the uses that would be permitted within the Central Business District versus the uses that are currently permitted under the Office Research. I think where the Planning Board is coming from on this is that the Office Research portion of those uses is not going to be applicable in this particular regard, because these are more urban properties. Hence, the Central Business is the more appropriate designation to be used, hence the request to change the map.
Thank you, David. Does that answer your question, Duncan?
Not completely. I'm sort of wondering what...
Speak right into the mic, Duncan.
What are the proponents of the proposed change planning to do? I mean, why are we, what's the practical effect, or what would be the practical effect of this?
I'm going to ask Bob Thorson to come up and answer that.
One of the reasons that we're questioning it is that none of the uses that are there now are permitted. So they're all non-conforming uses under the current, yes, the now-current zoning of Office Research. So anytime, any change would occur, you'd be in a variance situation. You'd always have to get variances. And in, as a general policy in terms of planning, planning policy, you don't want to create a zoning district that is totally inconsistent with the existing uses that are already there. And so what we're trying to do is get it back to the uses that, the range of uses that were allowed, so that they would be allowed uses. And also, the owner, so far as I know, has no plans to develop the property. He's owned it for, I don't know, 15 or 20 years, and, but he'd like to have uses, a range of uses, that are consistent with the Central Business District, so that he can use the property without constantly having to go to the Board of Adjustment for any time there's a vacancy in that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are you all set, Duncan?
I think so. Just so I understand it, what basically the proponents are asking is just to make the existing uses, which, the coffee shop, the Gary's Beverage, all of those places, they're trying to make the existing uses, which, but for a variance, would be illegal. They're trying to make them legal by virtue of this ordinance. Is that the idea?
That's right. Come on in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan. We're at third and final time around. Do I have any other speakers before I close the public hearing? We're down to the approval of grants and donations. What is your wish, councilors? The first one is the acceptance of the donation for the restoration of the Stephen Chase tombstone in the North Cemetery. Who would like to make the, Councilor Grasso?
Yes, Your Honor. I move that we accept the donation of $500 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, the Louise Tullman Fund, for the restoration of the Stephen Chase tombstone.
Second.
I second that motion.
Very good. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, could I ask that if this motion passes, that we send a letter of thanks to Louise Tullman, because she did set up this fund, and she seems very, very dedicated to the restoration of these sites, and she's been just a constant advocate, and she also puts her money up...
Right.
...to have these restorations done. So maybe perhaps a letter from you expressing her gratitude.
Very good. Councilor Marconi?
Having been the chairman and the only member of the cemetery committee in the past, I want you to know that Louise Tullman has been invaluable. No matter who comes in and needs information on any of the cemeteries, all I have to do is refer them to Mrs. Tullman. She has a file, she's a record keeper, she's absolutely fantastic, and if we had to pay her, we couldn't afford her.
Thank you. Councilor Lown?
I'm wondering where the unveiling is.
You have an invitation in your packet.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Is it in the cemetery?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yes, it's right in the cemetery. In the cemetery. Is that all? Ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The next one is an acceptance of Great Upper Scottetor Community Foundation grants for Lullabies and revales, community arts impact projects. Who would like to make the motion on this, please?
Your Honor?
Councilor Grasso, come on now.
I move that we accept the amount of $200 from the Town of Easton as a contribution to be placed in the Coalition Legal Fund.
Second. Um...
Oh, I'm sorry. The grant, I'm sorry. Oh, there's a lullaby and, I'm sorry, Revelies Community Arts Impact Project, yes. I move that we accept...
Did I get a second? Second. I'd like to ask, with your permission, to have Nancy come up and say a few words. Tell us a little bit about it, if that's all right with each counselor. Is that fine? Fine. Come right up, Nancy.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to the city councilors for considering this. Lullabies and Revelies is a group of folks who got together in 1996 as a result of the musical Shipyard Project. And we've been involved in the arts ever since. This particular project that we are asking you to accept the grant for is one that documents all the community-based arts that have been going on in Portsmouth since '96 that are related to the Shipyard Project. And believe me, there are many, many of them. It's really quite an accomplishment. We hope that, once this documentation is over, the plan is for it to be available to anybody in the city who wants to use it, to show other communities what we've done, or to discuss specific projects with people in this community, sort of a boasting project.
Very good. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Is everyone ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. Second reading of proposed amendments to Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Period 202, for the rezoning of land on Deer Street. Counselor, who would like to make the motion on this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor. Yes, Councilor Henderson.
Uh, move to pass second reading, amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10.202 as recommended by the planning board and schedule a third and final reading at the May 6 City Council meeting.
Second. Discussion? Uh, Councilor Laun?
Yeah, I'll, I'll vote for the motion. I just want to clarify that I think that Bob Thorson and Dave Holden have made it very clear that this zoning, zoning of this area is an anomaly which really doesn't fit with the uses that are there now. Eventually, over time, it may mean that a different building could be constructed with different parking requirements and different coverage of the square footage, but for right now, it appears to me to be the right thing to do.
Good. Counselor Hein?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think this is a good motion simply because it will possibly add to our tax base consistent with the zoning in that area.
Any other? Uh, Counselor McConney?
Just to agree with the two previous fees, I just wanted you to know that I had no idea how that place was zoned down there until I got all this information because I realized it was because of the fish plant. I wasn't quite sure what they were going to do about the fish plant, but this was ridiculous and this should be done away with and let these people have the use of their property.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 8, Period 302- dash, City Auburnus.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Panalakis?
Move to pass third and final reading. Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions, a letter from John Shagnan, Ambit Engineering, Inc., regarding site review application for property located at 22 Deer Street. What is your wish, councilors?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes, Assistant Mayor?
Move to the City Manager of the Park.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstained.
Very good. A letter from Arthur Parrott regarding an ordinance which prohibits members of the zoning Board of Adjustments from holding another office. If I might, I would like to pass my gavel and speak to this.
Madam Mayor, will you be making a motion?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay. The Chair recognizes the mayor.
Uh, Arthur Parrott came to me, uh, and we discussed this. As you all know, he is on the voter of registrars. And I spoke with Attorney Sullivan, and I will have him speak on it, but Attorney Sullivan said, "All we would have to do would be to eliminate, uh, the voter registrar from the ordinance." Um, as you have seen, uh, I'm having a hard time getting somebody for an alternate on the Board of Adjustment, and, uh, the registrars only meet, what is it, once a year or twice a year at the most? And we're, we're losing people, we're losing people that are very vital that could do a good job. Yes. The elected ward workers would also be included in this. Uh, I'd like to ask if I could pass it to Bob, and maybe Bob could explain it a little bit better. Bob?
Yes, Your Honor. By ordinance, uh, neither planning board members nor Board of Adjustment members are allowed to hold any other municipal office. I think that there is kind of a conflict with those important board members holding some kinds of municipal office, but an elected ward worker is not one of them. I can't think of a single practical effect of prohibiting a person from having, uh, from being on the Board of Adjustment and serving as an elected ward worker. And there's actually a negative effect that comes about from that prohibition. It means that good people like Arthur Parrott are unable to serve, uh, on the planning board and the Board of Adjustment simply because they're working in, uh, the election process. So what I suggested to the mayor was that if the council approved, we could draft an ordinance to, uh, allow member, elected ward workers, election officials, uh, we'll define the class maybe a little more broadly after we read all the prohibitions. Anyway, we could, uh, bring back a first reading ordinance, amending the planning board and Board of Adjustment ordinances to allow those people to serve.
Okay. So your motion is to allow the city attorney to bring back, uh, first reading, is that correct?
That's right.
Madam Mayor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. We hear a second from Counselor McConney. The Chair recognizes Counselor McConney.
Why is it that nobody ever knows that there's a conflict with these positions until it happens to them? Don't they know what they're getting into when they apply for this? And I refer to Charlie Vaughn on the school board being elected and being a trustee, which he had to resign as a trustee. I'm not in favor of moving and changing any of this at this time just to satisfy the desires of one person, and I don't know Mr. Parrott, so it isn't personal. I just feel that if you're going to apply for something, we, the city councilors, apply to run for this office that we're holding, we have to know what the rules and regulations are prior to our coming here, all right? And if you win, you know what the rules are to abide by them, as the mayor points out to us quite often, justifiably. But I can't see changing this just to satisfy one person. Number two, I really feel that to say that we can't fill an office, all due respect, Your Honor, is a lame excuse. If we can't find somebody, then we better look a little harder because there are people who will serve. But I can't see making the special exception. I find it very, very much against the principles that were there when this gentleman asked for this position. Now, he could either take one or the other, like Charlie Vaughn did, and let it go at that. End of my testimony.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Whitehouse.
Uh, thank you, Assistant Mayor Hanson. I'm going to support the motion because every once in a while, a person comes along that's very knowledgeable. You, you watch this person over many, many years. As chairman of the planning board, in my opinion, sitting out there in the audience and, and following planning board meetings, uh, this person came up with many times against touchy, delicate hardship issues. And that's why I will support the motion because this person should come back into the realm of being either on one of the land regulatory boards or on another board, which he would be very beneficial.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehouse. Uh, Counselor Laun?
Uh, as I understand it, Arthur Parrott, uh, when he ran for the ward registrar, uh, looked into the issue of whether he could serve as registrar and chair of the planning board and understood after investigating that there was no prohibition, but after the election, found out there was a state statute that evidently no one knew about, and so the city lost this valuable public servant. This is a slightly different issue, I think, uh, because it pertains to a city ordinance. Uh, I'm wondering why we should have the ordinance at all. Maybe there are some conflicts that would arise, and I think Bob Sullivan referred to some, uh, I, I can't think of what they would be, but, uh, maybe we, do we, do we have to carve out these exceptions, or can we abolish the ordinance? I think we're looking for good public servants, and we want to facilitate getting them to serve the city.
Counselor Hein?
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. The Board of Adjustment is probably the only board in this city that is semi-autonomous. Once the mayor selects a name and it's approved by this council, we lose all control over the board. They respond only to the state. So I think that it might be a very minor move to change the selection from this council and the mayor to the people who vote. I, I think it's really a good move.
Any further, Counselor Panalakis?
Yes, I'd just like a clarification. Is this a city ordinance that does this, or is it a state statute that does it?
It is a city ordinance.
Thank you.
Counselor McConney?
Reference was made by one of the councilors that we have knowledgeable people, and I'm not questioning anyone's knowledge. I'm only questioning the fact that in the middle of the ballgame, somebody wants to play and they don't have a bat, and I, I find that hard to understand or hard to explain, and that's nothing personal involving the gentleman that is requesting this. I don't feel we should do this. I really feel in conscience that we're showing preferential treatment, and I really will not support this, and I hope some of the others feel the same way that I do. I think it's improper to bring this forward just for one person. I think he should make a selection. Do you want to be a, uh, as a ballot, as a Board of Registrars, or do you want to be on this board? And I think that he should make the decision and make a selection and let it go at that. I don't think he can have his cake and eat it too.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Counselor McConney. I think that, um, sometimes in life, you have to make choices, and if he truly wanted to get back on the, on the land used for it, I think he could resign his position as ward four registrar. I, I also think that if this had been someone who, for one reason or another, was not in favor with some members of the council, that we wouldn't even be looking at doing this. I don't think that, um, this is, I don't think we should go this way. There are other positions in the city in which it says that you cannot hold more than one elected office at a time, so I think that that's the way it is. I don't know that changing it is going to be for the betterment of the city. I think it's just going to raise a lot more questions that we'll have to answer.
I'm going to have the City Clerk reread the motion that we're about to vote on.
Sure. Move to refer to the city attorney to draft an ordinance for first reading at the May 6 City Council meeting.
Any further discussion? Counselor Laun?
Could I offer an amendment that, that when the city attorney comes back, that he could maybe give us some examples of, of conflicts of interest that should be governed by the ordinance and not eliminated?
Of course. You'll include that? Okay.
So, just so that I can, I don't have sufficient knowledge to know what those conflicts might be, and it would help me to see them.
Why don't I suggest that you not amend the ordinance? I'll just do that anyway.
Fine. You mean amend the motion?
Add the motion.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious if there is any other positions out there that should be added to this ordinance. Are we going to run into these every time someone gets elected to something and finds that they shouldn't be there? Is there any way of clarifying that, Attorney Sullivan?
There may well be other municipal offices which are so far removed from the performance of the planning board or the Board of Adjustment that you may wish to remove them from the prohibition as well.
Mr. Chairman. Counselor Laun? Could we, could we see those things? I mean, if we're going to amend the ordinance, I'd like to do it once instead of coming back and, you know, instead of doing it just for the ward registrar, ward, uh, ward officials.
I think it would be possible to provide the council with some alternatives when the ordinance is drafted so that you can select from among several.
Is that agreeable?
Yep.
Counselor McConney?
Who's going to make the selection as to what boards we're going to consider?
I will propose some alternatives and the council would make the selection.
Some alternatives?
Yes.
But you, you, you may not include some?
I'm trying to accommodate the wishes of the council.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I, I know the seat attorney means well, and I don't want to put him on the hook, but I think this is absolutely ridiculous. The whole thing is ridiculous. It isn't necessary. This gentleman should make up his mind what board he wants to be on, select one, and let the other one go.
Okay. Are you ready for the vote? You want a roll call? Roll call vote. Okay. Roll call vote.
Sure. Ms. Laun?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
No.
Counselor Laun?
Yes.
Counselor Hein?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor McConney?
Absolutely not.
I think that's a no.
And Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? What do you mean?
Oh, Your Honor.
The results are?
Six to two passes.
Six to two passes. Madam Mayor, I'm going to return the gavel.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Counselor Laun?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of the city attorney?
Yes.
I referenced the state statute that, as, as I understand it, prohibited Arthur Parrott or anyone from serving on the planning board and being a ward chair. I haven't seen that statute, but if it is what I think it is, uh, I'd like to move that we ask our city delegation to look into repealing that as I see that it serves no purpose whatsoever.
In, uh, in my discussions with Arthur Parrott, I was looking at city ordinances. Uh, just to cover all the bases, I'll check state statutes as well and report back to the council on everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're down to a letter from Peter Braziano regarding the emergency alarm ordinance. Can I pass my gavel again?
The Chair recognizes the mayor.
I would like to propose the following motion, if I might, to set up a subcommittee and put three councilors on it, a person from the police department, a citizen who I will say, uh, Peter Braziano has taken a great interest in this and has done a lot of work on it, and also I'd like to put John Boehnke on it. Uh, and that's my motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
You got any volunteers, Madam Mayor?
Uh, on, as far as the three councilors go, um, Counselor Panalakis has already said she'd like to be on it. Anyone of the other councilors that would like to be on it, please get to me very soon. I'll have two more openings, and I'm quite sure Peter, Peter, would you be interested? Peter said he'd be interested, and we can get somebody from the police department, and John, I know you're busy, okay? And John's on. So, uh, if...
Are we ready for the vote?
Madam Mayor, would the purpose be to redraft it prior to the work session? Is that the idea?
I would, I would expect it to be...
Yeah, that sounds like a fine...
Almost eliminate a work session.
Sounds like a fine idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Grasso?
I'd like to second the motion before we vote.
We already did. It's done.
One question before we vote. May I?
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes. Um, Your Honor, the makeup of the committee will be six people. You're talking about three council members, one civilian, uh, one taxpayer, Peter Braziano, John Boehnke, and one from local PD.
Right.
And this will be a temporary, uh, committee until we go into a work session and make final decisions.
There is no work session.
And there's no work session.
We haven't set up a work session?
No.
On the alarm system?
You're going to be doing the work.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And get this going.
And then you're going to bring it back to the council after you've poured through all of this.
Do you anticipate, um, maybe by midsummer, we could eliminate this committee?
Oh, gosh, yes.
What's your recommendation?
I'll, I'll serve. I'll serve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll serve.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehouse. Well, we're looking for one more.
One more. Brett?
I will serve if, if no one else wants to.
And Derek, you've got your three volunteers. So now, are you ready for the question? I, I think until we had three, uh, maybe you didn't want to vote on it, so are you ready for the vote now that you got your three? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Are you going to pass the gavel back, or you want to take it this time?
No, I think that takes care of me. I think that takes care of me. Thank you, Assistant Mayor.
So the letter was referred to the subcommittee, is that correct?
Right. Would you believe we're down to the city manager already?
Wow.
And John has, uh, John has three items that require action. John?
Yes, Your Honor. The first item deals with a report back on the preambulation of city boundaries. As you recall, at the March 18th meeting, Counselor Panalakis requested that I investigate the cost of preambulating the city's boundaries, and I've attached a memorandum from Peter Brits, our environmental planner who did some research for us, indicating that the cost of the preambulation could range between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars, depending on the extent of the boundary surveys. The cost of preambulating Newington, Greenland, Newcastle boundaries, and Rye really are not what is driving the cost of this proposal, and those could probably be done if we wanted to, if we wanted to break it up into two phases. Phase one could be to preambulate the boundaries here in New Hampshire, the, uh, the boundaries with Greenland, Rye, Newcastle, and Newington, and I think that could be done for five thousand... Greenland, Rye, Newcastle, and Newington, and I think that could be done for five thousand dollars or less. I know that Greenland has preambulated their boundaries over the last couple of years, Newington has, so pretty much it would be my destiny that we go out and walk those boundaries with the selectmen from those appropriate towns. I think there are boundary markers there. I think with a little help from some outside help, we could do those boundaries pretty much with staff time and maybe some minor costs associated with it. Phase two would be the more expensive preambulation, which would be determining our boundary with Kittery and might even be a piece of Elliott as well. So what we've done is we went to an individual that has this background and this expertise, in fact, has worked with Newmarket and other communities in New Hampshire to preambulate their boundaries. I know in Newmarket there was some controversy over a particular boundary, and he worked with them, and the major cost, that would probably put the cost probably around twenty five thousand dollars of the thirty thousand dollars that's estimated, would be for the preambulation of the boundaries that would be for Kittery and possibly Elliott. The state statute requires that the boundaries of a community be preambulated every seven years. The last time we find records of a preambulation on file with the city clerk is 1929. We do believe that there were some preambulations that took place in the late seventies with Greenland and Newington, but I might add that Newington, Greenland, and other communities have done their preambulations. So those boundaries would not be very extensive. We could go through and do that, as I indicated, mostly in-house with representatives of those abutting communities. I'm reporting back to the city council relative to this. It was a proposal of Counselor Panalakis, giving the city council an option of where they possibly get the money if they so choose. Also, if the city council wants, we could break it into two projects, we could do whatever you want, but this is a report back, and I'm basically looking for direction from the city council on how you want us to proceed with this.
Should we have a motion first and a second, and then discussion? Counselor Panalakis?
Move to authorize the city manager to spend up to thirty thousand dollars from the FY-03 capital fund cap contingency account for the preambulation of all city boundaries in accordance with RSA 51 colon 2.
Do I have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Second, Your Honor, a second.
Counselor Marconi?
We did some preambulization when I was on the council once before because I walked the Newcastle.
Your Honor, may I speak to Counselor Marconi? You may have done that, but for the official records that are filed with the state, what we have done research on, the only ones that have been officially filed with the state and that are on file with the city clerk, we can only find from 1929. Not to say that they haven't been done, but the ones that count are the ones that are on file with the state and with the city clerk.
Could I ask why we have to do anti-definable lines already identified by each community?
The, if I might, Your Honor, the statutes do call for preambulation of boundaries within New Hampshire of each community, and those boundaries should be preambulated every seven years. The issue that is silent, though, is the issue of preambulating a boundary in Kittery and Elliott. The real binding aspect of the statute is dealing with the boundaries within New Hampshire. We can, we don't have to. I'm just looking for direction. I was asked to report this back, and this is the information that I've received as to the cost of preambulating. And however you want to proceed.
Why do we have to do any in Maine?
Your Honor, may I speak again? Again, Counselor, I was asked to bring this information back, and I would, I would ask that you, I would refer to the counselor that made this request to answer your question.
If you, if you're going, if you're going to do boundary lines and you want to know where your state is located, then you should need to do all of them. That includes the ones that connect with Maine, and that's the ones that connect with Greenland and Rye and whatnot. Maine and New Hampshire are two separate states. I don't understand why we have to go over to Maine to find out where our boundary is. The middle of the river defines that, not according to the records.
Is that it, everyone? Counselor Whitehouse? And then Counselor Hines?
Yes, one question to the city manager. May I? Get one.
Yes, go right ahead.
John, I, one of the figures have changed. I pulled my sheet from the capital plan, and it calls for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the capital and contingency. Is that figure correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. I looked at previous years, it was fifteen thousand, and then there were six thousand. So that's, that's a figure that is a certain percentage of the bonding, right? Is that how you figure in the capital? I mean, to put it in contingency?
That was the, was the thought, if I might, Your Honor. That was the recommendation of the planning board and the staff. There are many projects that are coming up that, because of the building nature, may have additional costs associated. Specifically, we want to do some more improvements to some of the fire stations.
Okay. One more question, Your Honor. I'm concerned about the boundaries in the Piscataqua River. The state has already spent over a million dollars going to court in reference to the boundaries between Maine and New Hampshire. I'm glad the motion says up to thirty thousand dollars. So I just hope if there is a question about boundaries along our river, that we back off and not pursue it any further. And I hope that they don't come back, the consultants or the ones who are going to do the survey, come back to us for more money. I'm looking at the fee schedule, possibly ninety dollars per hour for the first hour for research, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, the minimum charge, a conference, attending a conference, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, consulting fee, a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. You know, thirty thousand dollars could be eaten up in very little time for this project.
Your Honor, if I might...
And John, I'd like to answer that.
We basically brought back what was requested of me to bring back. This is, this individual, this is his business. The city council may or may not accept that and could reject it. All I'm saying is that this is just a number that we brought back to you at the specific request of the city council on March 18. I may suggest to you that there's a way that we can approach this and maybe do it in a way that would see what kind of consultant the individual is. We could start with phase one, which would be preambulating our boundaries within New Hampshire and seeing how that works, and then I could come back to you with phase two and then say, okay, we did ride Newcastle, Newington, and Greenland. This is what we spent, this is what we found, we satisfied the statute, and we did it with X amount of staff time and X amount of consulting time. And then before I go into doing the phase two, which would be preambulating the boundaries of Kittery and Elliott, I would come back to the city council, and so that you would have more of a comfort factor with that.
I have Counselor Hines, Counselor Grasso, Counselor, Assistant Mayor Hanson, and then back to Counselor Loew.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two questions for the city attorney. The first question is, is there not an RSA, the state of New Hampshire, that every municipality must perambulate its boundaries every seven years?
Yes, there is such a statute.
Second question, is there not an RSA passed not too many years ago that required every state mandate to be state-funded?
The constitution of the state of New Hampshire was amended, maybe twelve years ago, somewhere in that range, to create a situation whereby if the state government mandates an obligation for the municipalities, the state government either has to fund that mandate or it is invalid. However, the statute, which talks about perambulation, predates the constitutional amendment.
Thank you.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes, I suggest we send the state bill. My question was concerned the history of the preambulation filed, and it's Counselor Marconi's statement that says here that in March 77, they did Portsmouth and Rye, so that's probably what you were referencing about the more recent one. But in all of these, there has not been any preambulation done on the eastern boundaries of the city. So does that make the perambulation incomplete, since we've never done the side that faces the water?
It does appear that the city of Portsmouth and all of its adjoining towns have failed to comply with the statute requiring perambulation.
So to have, to completely comply, you would have to do the waterfront side, too?
At least the boundary between Portsmouth and every New Hampshire municipality. In its simplest form, I might add, perambulation is nothing more than administrative representatives of the town and the city walking the boundary together and agreeing in its location.
I think, I think that maybe the way to go would be to take this in two parts, as the city manager suggests.
Excuse me, Mayor, could I be recognized?
Uh, no, sir. I'm sorry. Uh, the Assistant Mayor is next.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the motion to read, move to authorize the city manager to spend up to five thousand dollars for the preambulization of boundaries of New Hampshire borders.
Do, do I have a second on that?
Your Honor, I'll second the motion.
All right, discussion.
Yes, if I may speak. I think that when you start getting in the middle of the Piscataqua, that you need to add one million dollars to this for minimum. We already know what the state spent. We know it's going to get a pissing contest between Maine and New Hampshire. We've already received the phone calls from Kittery. They're upset about this, and I can tell you, we're just going to end up in court. So if you're going to do it, you've got to realize this is laying groundwork for a multimillion dollar lawsuit, putting on the backs of taxpayers, and I don't see any sense, since it's already been to the Supreme Court, and if we turn around and start this process, we're going to want to go on and on and on, and it's going to cost a guarantee of a minimum of a million dollars by the time we're done with legal conalium, and the Supreme Court will come right back to where they were. Now, maybe we don't like the decision that the Supreme Court made, but that's the decision. And for us to turn around and start this, I think is starting that train down that track that I don't want to go, and that's why I've said, let's meet our obligations under the RSA, do the up to five thousand dollars due to New Hampshire borders, and we're done with it.
Counselor Loew, and then we'll go over onto the other side. Yes.
When I was growing up in Amherst, New Hampshire, my father was a selectman, and I do recall one day he went out and perambulated the town boundaries. He was gone for about a half an hour. It didn't cost anything, and I'm perfectly in favor of all of us going out and walking the boundaries and filing some letter with Conker to satisfy the statute, but I think we have no legal duty or other duty to determine the boundary between Portsmouth and Maine. I'm not aware that there's any dispute as to the location of the boundary with any other town, but I'm going to vote against the motion as amended because I just don't see why this should cost anything.
Yes, Counselor Panalakis, and then Counselor Marconi.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to table this at this time.
Second. Very good.
Clarification of the table motion? Is that a motion to lay on the table?
To lay it on the table to further notice.
So it's an undebatable motion, is that correct, city attorney?
Actually, the motion is to...
Because it's to a time certain, which is later, versus just lay on the table?
I just would like to lay it on the table. No time certain, no nothing.
So if it's just lay on the table, in essence, if it's favorably, it's non-debatable, and then in essence kills it, is that correct, under Roberts' rules?
The, the motion actually is debatable, however, it does in effect kill it.
Kill it, okay.
Why would it kill it if it's tabled? Can it be brought up at a later date?
To bring it up at a later date would require either prior notice or a two-thirds vote of the city council.
But you could bring it up at a later date.
Right, but if nobody takes any action to bring it back, it will not be back on its own.
Okay.
All right.
So what is the motion on the floor, Your Honor?
Uh, to lay, to lay the, to lay this item on the table.
Was there a second?
I, I'll second it.
Counselor Grasso?
Go in.
All right, you all ready for the vote?
Yes.
A roll call. A roll call, okay. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Loew?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Marconi?
Yes.
Ms. Rouse?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Unanimous. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with the proposed license agreement for 1725 Woodbury Avenue. The city clerk passed out to you an amendment to that license agreement, which restates the address of the business. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm on the next item, I apologize. This item deals with the proposed license agreement for 1725 Woodbury Avenue. It's for a license to allow entry to the city's right-of-way, and the planning board requires of a license agreement to be entered into the use of the right-of-way, and if approved, the license would be subject to an annual renewal. Basically, this would be for improvements out in front of the car wash on Woodbury Avenue, and we would allow for those improvements to take place in the city's right-of-way. It is an improvement which we, the planning board feels is a positive one. I have attached a copy of a map that shows you the location of that improvement, and what I'm asking for is that the city council approve the proposed license agreement between the city of Portsmouth and Mr. and Mrs. Irvin Vazirakis in accordance with the conditions outlined in my memorandum.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Just for a point of clarification, we advise this has not come before traffic and safety.
Very good.
And I don't see that, if you're proving this, then you bypassed traffic and safety, correct?
I didn't know we were bypassing traffic and safety. I didn't see what was necessary to go to traffic and safety, but if you feel necessary, we can always go to traffic and safety.
Well, not really, you indicated that you're going to be doing things to the city property in changing traffic flow, correct?
Well...
You're trying to do a stacking area, which has created a problem for us.
Right, and if you so choose to bring it to the traffic and safety, this is a planning board recommendation.
Maybe we could hear from David.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't really have a problem wanting to send it to traffic and safety.
Well, I'm just making folks aware that it's, whatever's done here has never been to traffic and safety, which is highly unusual.
Well, I guess I'd ask David to, to answer why they can go to traffic and safety.
And Brad has a question, and I have a question of Dave, too. Is yours of Dave?
No.
No. I have just one question, Dave. The Mobile Home Park out there, is this going to affect them? They've had a few problems out there, noise and things like that. Have you gotten any complaints as to this? Do they know about it? Have they been made aware what's taking place out there?
Yes, 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 and...
I called two of them, and they were not aware of that.
This went through site review with the planning board. There have been at least two public hearings on it, and all the abutters were notified. All the improvements are taking place on Woodbury Avenue within the city's right-of-way. The reason it didn't go to traffic safety is the city's parking and transportation engineer reviewed it and deemed it to be a minor application.
Do you know if anybody from the Mobile Park were at those two public hearings?
I don't recall, but they were, the owners of the park were notified as abutters.
Your Honor, I might, if I might add, I would suggest my motion would be to refer to the Traffic and Safety Committee with the report back. If the chairman of the Traffic and Safety Committee has a concern, certainly we don't want to, to bypass them if he feels it's necessary. So, you know, it'll give us an opportunity to, to go to the traffic and safety. In addition, we'll talk to the, to the, to the people that you've been in contact with.
I feel better if some of them were contacted. I, I feel better if some of them were contacted because they're taking any calls from those people. Brad?
Well, I would move then that we approve the proposed agreement, subject to its approval by the Traffic and Safety Committee, so that it doesn't have to come back here.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Um...
Madam Mayor?
Uh...
May I reiterate that the Traffic and Safety is nearly an advisory board that will make an advisory opinion back to the city council, but is not an approval board. Never has been. It goes, it refers, makes its recommendation to the TACT, makes recommendation back to the planning board, made recommendations to the city council, but it has never been an approval board as, as far as final authority. So, I mean, that's up to you. I, I use this car wash and I just think that maybe the queuing is a problem, but I think now you could play, if, while you're clearing this up, you also have a conflict of coming out of the car wash with Oriental Gardens driveway, particularly in the winter time with the ice and stuff. And trying to get that, you might as well clear it all away at the same time and make it safe for everybody.
Brad and then Harold?
Maybe I should rephrase the motion to say that I move that we approve the proposed license agreement, uh, as, subject to the, uh, a, a contrary recommendation by the TACT.
I'll, I'll, the second will agree with that.
Traffic and safety. Traffic and safety as well.
Task. Did I say ta- task?
Task.
Traffic and safety.
Traffic and safety. Okay. All right. Uh, yes, uh, Counselor Whitehouse?
And, Your Honor, I want to see this come back to us on an action sheet, as many issues from Traffic and Safety do.
Very good.
Please include it.
All right. Very good. Counselor Grasso?
If I understand the motion, it will not come back to the council's executive.
It does. You'll look, you'll look at, it's right here. You'll look in your agenda later on, an action sheet, which you accept the recommendation of.
I understand that. This motion said that, uh, he wanted to get rid of it. Yeah.
Correct.
Well, he said that if he did not give it a contrary recommendation...
Yeah.
That, that it would be approved.
We know it's a vote tonight.
Uh, Kelly, why don't you read it?
Okay. Move to approve the license agreement subject to the recommendation of the Traffic and Safety Committee.
Did everyone hear that?
No.
No?
No.
Were you talking?
No, of course not. You don't, you don't...
Move to approve the license agreement subject to the recommendation of the Traffic and Safety Committee.
Yep.
All right.
And I'll see that on an action sheet before.
And I have that.
Thank you.
What's the question, Your Honor?
Everybody ready? All in favor? Uh, all vote.
I don't know, Your Honor, move for two.
That was a tough one, John.
Dan, Danny has to get that. Item number three, I hesitate to move into it, but request for approval of access easement deed at four oh six U.S. Route One bypass. And what I'd like to, this is the item that I mentioned, there's a change in the, uh, the easement deed for the location of the business. I know that Peter Lachlan is here, representing, uh, the, uh, U.S., four oh six U.S. Route One bypass, uh, property owners. And I would suggest that if anybody has any questions relative to this proposed easement, uh, that we could, if Your Honor would permit, we could ask the, uh, Peter Lachlan to come forward. But before I do, I'd like to have David Holden come forward and explain a little bit about what took place with this before the planning board.
This particular application has also gone through the site review process and has also been to traffic and safety. This is a request, actually what the applicant needs is access to the city's water system. What is being proposed here is an easement that will allow the city to locate the water service for this particular facility. That's a little bit unusual here is the easement is the entire property, because when this area was developed, the exact location of the city's water line and the exact location would be best suited for the service is as yet undetermined. I would assume that this request could be narrowed down or actually, as presented, it will cover the need for the city to be able to go onto the property and turn valves and maintain the water line. It is purely for the water service to this property, which is on its own separate lot.
Uh, any questions of Dave? You got any news?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve the proposed license agreement between the city of Portsmouth and Mr. and Mrs. Irvin, uh, Grasso?
No.
No? Move to approve the, oh, okay. Move to approve the proposed access easement deed and authorization, authorized execution by the city manager, subject to approval of the city attorney as to its confidentiality.
Second.
Uh, second, uh, discussion now. Uh, Brad, did you have your hand up?
No, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, anybody on this side? Did you have your hand up? Anyone on this side? You all ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye, all vote.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the next items are informational items. I want to remind people that spring cleanup of filthy waste collection will be next week, April twenty-second to the twenty-sixth. And also I want to remind people that on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, our households, household hazardous waste may be brought to the public work facility at six eighty Beverly Hill Road from eight AM to one PM. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Are there any other questions of John? Under info? Any questions of John?
Maybe John, maybe John could, um, answer a question that came up during the public comment session about the hundred thousand dollars on the snow budget.
That, that is incorrect, if I might...
He's already gone.
No, I think folks at home were watching that.
Yeah.
I think it needs clarification.
There's two things that I'll do. First of all, I will provide the city council with an update as to where we are on our snow removal budget. One thing you have to realize, our snow removal budget is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, includes all, uh, snow removal activities, uh, materials, overtime, hiring of equipment. Uh, we normally fund about, I would say approximately seventy storms, if you will. Last year, you recall that the city spent almost four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in snow removal. Typically, in any one year, what we do is we, at the end of the year, we basically buy salt and fill the salt shed, uh, for the next year. Uh, and because we were, two things were happening. One, we're out of money and we came back to the city council and asked for an additional appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover us from last fiscal year. But two, we were redoing the salt shed and, uh, we basically had an empty shed this year. And so we ba, we went out and bought materials. So we basically bought materials and, and for this year, which normally we would have had on storage when we came into this fiscal year. In addition, we had about a three dollar, uh, between a two and three dollar a ton increase in, um, the, uh, the cost of, uh, the, uh, the salt and sand, uh, which then caused us about, uh, to spend about sixty percent more than we would have on salt and sand. We're getting back into the cycle again where we now have the, the sheds filled and we go into the next fiscal year, we'll be okay. But every fiscal year, we depended on having that shed filled and we appropriated two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Last year, as I said, two things took place. We, we had to spend over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in snow removal. Uh, so this year, to be honest, we're, we're just about even on snow removal because the money that we saved on overtime and hiring of equipment went into buying materials. And I'll give you a more detailed report, uh, in writing.
John, I, I'd like to ask if you would send a letter to Mr. Ecker. Uh, also, I would like to ask Mr. Ecker, uh, the saying as what Peter Braziano does, he comes in with written questions, which is wonderful, and I would like Mr. Ecker to do the same thing. The public comment session is for the people to come before the mic on a specific problem, but they can't expect you to sit here and answer them back. So if they would come in with their question and present it to you, you would get back to them definitely.
Certainly, Your Honor.
Then I will say, Your Honor.
Uh, I, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out.
Normally, when people call and ask a question, we give them an answer, we'll...
I know you do. I know. And I'd appreciate it if you would give them...
Sure.
Uh, give them a letter.
Now, I'll provide the council with updated information.
Good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Then we're down to the mayor. Uh, the first thing, uh, on the mayor's list is the amendment to City Council Rule Forty-Five under public hearings. Um, I'm, I'm just going to say to the councilors that, now, should I pass my gavel maybe?
Yes.
Because I'm going to talk about it.
Madam Mayor, my understanding, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, tonight's discussion in this Rule Forty-Five will be laid before the council and will be voted on at the next city council meeting, is that correct?
That's absolutely right.
That would be my recommendation. There is an alternative, which is...
The two-thirds vote, yes. Okay. The chair recognizes the mayor?
I, I will be very forward here tonight. You all know that we have had a constant problem with a certain person, uh, coming before us at public hearings. He has been restricted to speak at the public comment session because we did ask him to come in with a letter saying he was sorry and he would be more than welcome to do it again. But he never did that, so he is restricted from the public comment session. But he can get up and he can speak at the public hearings. My problem is, I don't feel that I should have to go through that harassment at every public hearing with this gentleman. And I also do not like to see losing my council. My councilors are getting very upset. Uh, the last time Harold was jumping around and...
No, no.
And Alec was trying to solve everything and it's got to be settled, it's got to be settled the right way. And I think if you all read this, I'm going to ask Bob Sullivan to read it and explain it to each one of you.
Yes, Your Honor. The proposed rule would be Rule Forty-Five Public Hearings. If adopted, it would read as follows. City council public hearings shall be subject to the following terms and conditions. A, the order in which speakers shall be called, the duration of time permitted for each person to speak, and the number of opportunities which any person shall be provided to speak on any issue may be regulated by the mayor and the interest of legislative efficiency. And B, all speakers must limit their presentation to the issue for which the public hearing has been called. Any speaker not in compliance with this provision shall be ruled out of order by the mayor. This rule was drafted, uh, to address precisely the situation that the mayor just outlined for the council. Um, the thought is that it will give, uh, the mayor, he or she, um, sufficient authority to maintain control during public hearings and keep the debate focused on the issue at hand.
I have been corrected by the Assistant Mayor that Ed Lawrence was not, uh, was actually asked to follow the rules of the public comment session and, uh, which he did not do. Clarified? Clarified.
Just the letter, it wasn't a letter of apology, it was a letter stating that he agreed to, uh, follow rule, council rules.
What, what you're adding, Your Honor?
Okay. So, was she simply laying this on the table, that there'll be no action until the next city council meeting, when it will appear on the agenda under... Counselor Grasso?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm passing the last sentence. It says, "Any speaker not in compliance with this provision shall be ruled out of order by the mayor." I'd like, I mean, something to go on and saying something that, and she'll be asked to sit down and, you know, you, you rule the person out of order, still doesn't take care of what happened to the person.
City Attorney have any comments?
I think that if the mayor rules the speaker out of order, the speaker would not be allowed to continue to speak.
But did we need to put something in there to, to say that very clearly, that the person will be asked to sit down or something to that effect?
I actually believe this language would accomplish that goal.
Any further discussion, Counselor Whitehouse and Counselor Marconi? Now, remember, past practice has been, we simply have put this in the packet, the debate occurs after you've had time to look at this, any amendments you want to make, at the next city council meeting. So, Counselor Whitehouse?
Over the course of years, Assistant Mayor, I, I've seen unless it's nipped early, it sort of sneaks through. And that's why I'm letting my views be known early on this issue. I agree with a portion of Part A. I agree totally with portion B, but I'd like to question a certain sentence in Part A. And that is, it says, "The duration of time permitted for each person to speak." In other words, the, uh, mayor, our honorable mayor, I respect her position and her title, will have the say on the duration of time. Now, I like to ask my city attorney, if we're talking about a federal grant which would stipulate the amount of time as a person would be speaking on a federal grant that came this way and we would have to approve of it, are we violating some, 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 some regulations that set down nationally?
I would say two things on that. First, uh, the assumption in the rule is that, uh, the mayor will exercise his or her power judiciously and lawfully. I don't think it's a requirement that you put it into the rule that the mayor won't violate federal law and ruling speaks out of order. And secondly, in the event you had a mayor who did choose to act in a, in a manner which the council felt was unreasonable, the council always has the ability to overrule the mayor on a five-vote motion.
Well, may I, one more statement, Your Honor? Go ahead. One more statement and then I'm throwing. But I will not accept, uh, this, uh, uh, Rule Forty-Five as written unless that portion which gives, uh, the mayor regulations to regulate the time a person has to speak on an issue. I, I don't think that portion is necessary in Part A and B.
Thank you.
I think we're, I think we're stepping beyond our bounds.
Counselor Marconi?
May I ask a question?
You certainly may.
Can we bring this up tonight?
By a suspension of the rules of two-thirds, is that correct?
I, I actually, I'm recommending that, uh, exactly what the Assistant Mayor has said should happen, should happen, which is that the mayor has given you notice of this proposed rule change and it should actually be debated and voted upon at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Counselor Law? Law, and then Counselor Panellakis, did you have your hand up? I apologize, just one moment. Counselor Panellakis, we see you. Go ahead.
I just, I agree with this because I don't think that it's saying that she's going to set a time limit, but we have certain people that get up there and ramble for twenty minutes of time saying the same thing over and over again. And we are here to do the whole city's business, not just one person's business. So I don't think we're putting a time limit on anyone. We're just saying that, um, if they've gone on twenty minutes and they've said their piece and it's time for them to sit down. I think anyone given, um, to speak here more than ten minutes, they've more than said what had to be said.
Thank you, Counselor Panellakis. Counselor Law?
Uh, I don't have any problem with the rule and I've got great faith in the mayor's good judgment and fairness on this, uh, but I'm also wondering whether it's even necessary under Rule Forty, under Rule Six, the mayor is the presiding officer. Under Rule Forty, uh, Forty references Robert's Rules of Order, I would think that the presiding officer would always have the discretion and the power to, uh, to, uh, limit public comment and to do whatever appropriate to run the meeting.
Okay, so we lay in this on the table for the next city council meeting? Any further discussion between now and the next city council meeting? Counselor Marconi?
I just wanted to say, having been subject to the same, listening to the same abuse that the mayor has been taking, I don't find this out of order at all. I'm sorry that some people don't respect the mayor and the fact that she has been more than generous, more than generous, and still the subject of, of terrible comments made to her. And I myself would not have been able to take it because I think I would have punched somebody in the nose. But she's always kept, she's always kept her composure, she's generous with her time, even to when she cuts me short, I don't care. But she's fair and I don't think we can allow any more of this nonsense to go on in this chamber. And I'm, I'm serious about that.
Thank you, Counselor Marconi. Okay, we're done, we beat that dead horse for a while. And so, before I turn the gavel over to you, Madam Mayor, I understand that you have a motion to give us some money. Is that correct?
Right, right.
And your motion is?
Uh, let's see... Uh, let's see.
Coalition community?
Uh, the Coalition of Communities has sent, uh, from the town of Easton, has sent us a check for $200, which I'd like you to accept.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I have one on the.
Oh, okay. And there's one for the library, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
No, no, it's just, it's just to accept it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, we have, uh, one for the library, uh, which is $75.
$75.
$75, uh, and I'd like, uh, I'd like an okay to accept that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
There you go.
Very good, thank you.
Now, we're down to appointments, and, uh, the first one to be voted on tonight is Conservation Commission Donald M. Green.
Your Honor, I move the appointment of Donald M. Green to the, uh, Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Uh, the second one for consideration is Portsmouth Housing Commissioner for Portsmouth Housing, John Lee.
Can we go ahead and vote on this one, is that correct, because it's a housing authority?
Uh, no, this is consideration.
Okay, so it's on the table also?
Consideration. So, uh, I'm just putting it out before you, if anyone has any problems, please let me know. For consideration, and this one is to put in front of you, and if you have any problems, let me know, for the, for the, uh, peddle. That's the Portsmouth Economic Development Loan Program, Tara F. Tractor. That takes care of appointments. Uh, let's see, let me get into this. Uh, we have a little thank you card from our wonderful little city clerk thanking us for the beautiful flowers that were sent to her during her time of surgery. Uh, the next is a letter that I received, kind of late, so I just thought I'd tell you about it. Uh, it's kind of hard to read it. It, I would say this is senior citizen, it comes from Bill Clark from 438B Pleasant Street, and he is in senior housing. Now, how about getting me and Ollie's coffee shop to stop blocking the sidewalk with their metal tables and chairs? Number one. Under the tree, uh, they come up very close up to Pleasant Street. They're also in the crosswalk crossing Pleasant Street. They have plenty of room along, along something going, going up the hill, or something like that. I brought this before everyone last year because I have the same problem. Uh, there was a woman that tried to get through the crosswalks in a wheelchair and she could not maneuver it. So maybe we could have Jason look into that one, John?
That's the Ian Ollies downtown?
Yes, Ian Ollies. Uh, there's the letter. Uh, also, uh, Counselor Lam, I think maybe you found it, but if you didn't, uh, the new gravestone at the Stephen Chase site at the North Burial Ground is now in place, and, um, Audrey is giving everyone the opportunity and invitation to the official unveiling on Sunday, May 5th at 11:00 a.m. Okey-dokey. Uh, received a, uh, letter from, um, gubernatorial candidate Gordon Humphrey regarding MTBE. Very interesting letter, I'll make sure that you all get a copy of that. And that's it for the mayor. So now we're down to, uh, the assistant mayor, Alec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I moved that we accept the minutes and action sheet of the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting of March 21st, 2002. Second?
Question, Your Honor?
Uh, yes, Counselor, uh, Whitehouse?
Could the Chairman of the Traffic and Safety, uh, give a little synopsis on number 12? I'd like to be brought up to speed, the reasoning why, and read the.
No left turn?
Yes.
Uh, it was, it's extremely dangerous. Uh, the queuing of traffic, you just can't get out of that Dunkin' Donuts and make a left-hand turn safely. So I think you're going to see more of that, and that's right across from where that car wash is, but there, it is, uh, very, very dangerous intersection, particularly in the morning. You just can't get across to make a left-hand turn. So if you're going to have your coffee, grab it on the way into town, not on the way out of town, it, it hour.
Got a sign on the second driveway, no left turns, they're not making a left turn, they're going across to where the median strip is, and then making a left turn on the median strip if they're heading back into P's. I'm out there two or three times a week, between 5:00 in the morning and 9:00, very little traffic. You can cut across, you can get out of the lights at Garzen, uh, Garzen Road and go into P's with no problem. But it's going to be questionable, a left-hand turn coming out of that second driveway at Dunkin' Donuts. You do not make a left-hand turn, you go straight across to, as I said before, to you come to the median strip, then you left-hand turn and head to the lights on the corner of Garzen Road and Woodbury.
So when you see the blue lights coming after you, Harold, you'll know what they meant.
You don't make a left-hand turn there anyway. So this is something that, you know, as you read it, it, it's, it's, uh, it doesn't make sense.
You and Judge Taylor can discuss that.
Doesn't make sense.
I'm trying to know, give my coffee, go back to my job.
We ready for the vote?
You are ready for the vote, everyone?
I have a question.
Yes, uh, Counselor Panalakis?
Is that going to be in Dunkin' Donuts driveway?
No, it's actually, um, when, at the driveway, when you come out is, I believe, where the post is going to be, but you have to prove it first. They'll do proper postage, posting John Burke overseas, the traffic engineer.
I just thought that was private property.
No, it won't be on private property, it'll be on our railway.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Madam Mayor, the second item that I have under my name is to approve the minutes and action sheet of the parking committee, uh, of March 21st, 2002.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Yeah, one more question, Your Honor. I know it's late, I know it's late, Your Honor, I'll make it very fast. Uh, on number six, Pierce Island Parking. Each meeting that the Pierce Island Committee has, this issue is brought up, how can we regulate the parking over on Pierce Island? Now that we have 71 parking spaces identified with shrubbery and landscaping, uh, but they, and we grassed off an area down close to the water at every Pierce Island Committee meeting I attend, members of the committee are asking, how can we regulate that? So I hope our city manager will meet with, with Mr. Burke and, and come back with a recommendation of enforcing parking on Pierce Island.
Got that, John? Yep, John's got that now.
The reason why I mention it, because, you know, it was tabled under the action sheet.
Do you want me to read through it, Harold?
Go ahead. No, no, basically, the reason we wanted to, um, we wanted to look at also the boat launch as well, so we didn't have enough information to make the, uh, any kind of determination on that particular issue, and we still have to work on striping, uh, some of the, uh, other areas too. So we'll, we'll work with the Pierce Island Committee.
All right, John, thank you, John.
Yeah, actually, Hugh Jenks was at the meeting and, uh, he's agreed to work with us, so.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
That concludes my section, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Assistant Mayor, you've got to handle the gavel quite a few times tonight, didn't you?
I did.
Uh, Counselor Grasso, Earth Day Tree Planting.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Earth Day is April 22nd. The, um.
25th?
No, Earth Day is April 22nd. We will be having a tree planting ceremony on April 25th, which is a Thursday, at 2:15 in the afternoon at Haven Park. As with other years, our waste management, um, um, our solid recyclable contractor will be providing the tree, Co-Fline will be doing it this year for us, and we will be planting a cherry tree down there, um, to, I think this will be completing the, um, roll of trees that are there. And, um, I want to commend the public service, uh, Public Works Department, they'll be providing the, the labor and doing the digging, and that's, we're in the middle of, uh, this cleanup week, so it's an extra duty that happens to fall on that time for this year. But I think that it might have what's happened since last fall, that, um, Earth Day is a day that we can all appreciate a little bit more this time around.
Thank you, John, for time.
Did you give a time, John?
2:15.
2:15 at Haven Park on the 25th. Uh, we're into miscellaneous and unfinished business. I would just like to announce, uh, April 29th, Monday, at 6:30 p.m., we'll be having our work session regarding the school department FY3 budget. May 2nd, Thursday, 6:30 p.m., work session regarding the police department FY3 budget. May 6th, Monday, at 7:00 p.m., is our regular city council meeting. May 8th, Wednesday, 6:30 p.m., work session regarding the fire department budget. May 13th, Monday, 6:30 p.m., work session regarding the municipal, uh, budget. And May 20th will be our final city council meeting for May at 7:00 p.m. So, uh, councilors, as you know, we've got a heavy schedule. Uh, do I have an, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'm over here, John, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute.
Uh, yes, counsel.
Can I ask for, to get a copy of RS 851-2?
It, it actually is in here, um, connected with Peter Britts's.
I beg your pardon?
It's yours, yeah, it's, if you find Peter Britts.
It's under my comments, and there's a memory on the computer of Britts.
Okay.
And that's right there.
I just would like to read.
Yep, it's right in.
All set? Okay. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?